I'd like to call this March 27th meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you call the roll?
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here. Let the record show that all of our school board members are in attendance along with our division superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett, and our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, as well as our school board clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, and our student liaison, Mr. Alan Booth. And at this time, we're going to move on to invocation. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Booth to make some introductions.
Thank you, Mrs. Mugler. Chairman Mugler, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board, and the community at large, it gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce you to Kylie Smart, a 5th grade student at Burbank Elementary School. Tonight, she'll be leading us into invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School. School is something we must all embrace, knowledge we need to seek out and chase. Subjects and teaching styles are plentiful and varied, just like the backpacks we all need to carry. Sports, clubs, and activities at every single turn. So much to do, study, and learn. To get the most from school, we should consistently attend. Around each corner, there's always a friend. Our favorite teachers are friendly and kind. Their passion and job to expand every mind. School is something we must all embrace. Just remember to learn at your own pace.
Thank you, Kylie. Well, truer words have never been spoken. Thank you, Kylie, for working with us tonight. Now, not all of you have had the opportunity of speaking with this lovely young lady, but I had the chance before the meeting, and I'd like to share with you a little of what I learned about her. Now, of course, Kylie's a student at Burbank, and an extraordinary one at that. Her favorite subject is English, and her mom told me that she reads through books so fast that sometimes she'll have to go into Kylie's room at night and get her another book because Kylie's already finished the one she was given. I had to be forced to read as a child, so wow, Kylie, wow. I really hope you do well in Hampton City Schools, and I'm sure you will. It takes a village to raise a child, and here you have a village who wants the best for you. With Kylie tonight is her teacher, Ms. Thompson, her principal, Mr. Latush, and her mother. A round of applause for all of them. Again, thank you for joining us tonight, and I know it's a school night, so if you have to be getting home, please feel free.
They're taking you up on that offer really quickly.
Go read some books.
Thank you, Kylie, for joining us tonight. School, we must all embrace it. Very true. At this time, we're going to move to recognitions, but before I call on our Director of Public Relations and Marketing, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you. Well, I have to tell you, this morning, I had such a pleasant surprise. Actually, this happened last evening. On Channel 3, there was just this wonderful presentation by Kurt Russell. Donna Halpin, Donna, where are you? Stand up. She's a math teacher. Donna's a math teacher at Eaton Middle School, and she was surprised yesterday by People Taking Action Award, and I'd really like for everybody to see that tonight. Ms. Bowers, can you bring that up?
And on People Taking Action, news channel 3, and our community partner Southern Bay has a story of a very special educator and an 11-year-old student who was very determined to get our cameras to her classroom to put the spotlight on that teacher. What Donna Halpin was about to find out, one of her students wanted us to honor this math teacher at Hampton's Eaton Middle School. Do you have a student, Tamaya Bott?
I have a student named Tamaya Bott.
Where's Tamaya?
She's over there.
We've been getting some emails from Tamaya. The first came a few weeks ago.
I'm nominating Ms. Halpin because of all the things she has done for us.
Oh, Tamaya.
Before I came to Eaton Middle School, I was not good at math. I did not like it. Now, I love math.
Other emails, Martha, my whole class loves her. Tamaya was determined, and an email that were formed, I'm leaving this topic because she has changed my life. We have this, news channel 3, gift action award for you.
Thank you so much. I'm overwhelmed. I do this because I love my children, and I love teaching. I'm overwhelmed.
Our community partner, Southern Bay, they want you to have one hand up to meet the gifts card.
Oh, my God.
Are you going to pay this honor? And it's not just Tamaya who feels this way.
Miss Halpin, she's like, oh, mother to me. She makes things a little kids. So if I say retelling the proof, they're sitting there, they're like, what is she talking about? If I say tissue box, they're with me. They're like, okay, retelling the proof, we got you.
Making this exercise in geometry a little easier to tackle.
She does it in a way that you can understand it. Every dimension is two, length times height, right? Width times height or length times width.
Mrs. Halpin said she knew her career path early on.
That's the child. I always wanted to teach math. I find great satisfaction when I'm teaching, and I see the light go on in the child's eyes. When they're coming to you, they're completely lost, and then I explain it to them, and they say, now I have it.
I need it, Mrs. Halpin.
My teachers are still looking for that.
Tamaya was like, you're going to cover this.
Ms. Halpin, I understand you have somebody here with you.
Thank you all. I feel like I'm just being honored for doing my job. I'm still overwhelmed by all of this, but thank you very much for showing that.
Well, thank you for being the teacher that you are, and I have to kind of echo what he said. I wish I'd had you in geometry, too. But, you know, it's just so wonderful to view a media story and for it to be such a wonderfully uplifting, positive story. And so I want to thank you and keep up the good work. Congratulations, Ms. Halpin, and thank you for sharing your gifts and talents with our children in Hampton. At this time, we will begin recognitions, and I will call on our Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing, Ms. Anne Stephens Cherry, and she will be assisted tonight by school board member, Mrs. Monica Smith.
Thank you, and that was such a wonderful video. I got to tell you, I want to read just something that Ms. Halpin sent me in an email after Kurt left her office, her classroom. She says, "I hope they use everything I said." She said, "Because I said I've only worked here, and I never want to work anywhere else. The children are wonderful here, and so are the parents." So let's have another round of applause from Ms. Halpin. The month of April has been declared by Governor McDonnell, the month of the military child for 2013, and just in this Hampton Roads area alone, we have some 68,000 military children, making our area one of the highest concentrations of military children in the world. So there is a very special proclamation that has been done, and we'd like to call on Dave Wiker from Langley Air Force Base. He serves as the Division's liaison for Langley Air Force Base to come forward, as Ms. Smith reads a very important proclamation.
The state certificate of recognition, by virtue of the authority vested by the Constitution and the governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized Military Child Month. Whereas thousands of brave Americans have demonstrated their courage and commitment to freedom by serving the armed forces of the United States, both on active duty and in the National Guard and Reserves, and whereas there are more than 150,260 children and youth with a parent on active duty in the Guard or Reserves stationed in Virginia, and whereas Virginia has the highest number of active-duty school-aged children in the nation, and has committed to being an active participant in the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children in order to help them transition from school systems around the world, and whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia is partnering with the United States Department of Defense to increase access to affordable, quality childcare for military children, and whereas the children of our service members are major contributors to the strength of their parents every day, and whereas the children of military personnel make significant contributions to families, schools, communities, our Commonwealth, and the nation despite repeated and prolonged absences of one or both parents, and whereas when parents serve in the military, their kids serve too, and it is fitting for our Commonwealth to pay tribute to military children for their commitment, their struggles, and their unconditional support of our troops. Now, therefore, I, Robert F. McDonnell, not me, but do hereby recognize April 2013 as Military Child Month in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens.
Thank you so much, and we'd also like to give a special shout-out to Anne Bain, who serves as our community liaison person for the Hampton School Division. She does an outstanding job of keeping that military connection open for Hampton City Schools. Next, I'd like to call on the President of our PTA/PTSA Council, Ms. Pam Crum.
Good evening, Chair Mugler, Superintendent Dr. Shiflett. It gives me great pleasure to stand before you this evening. The Hampton Council PTA is part of a district. Our district consists of Newport News, York County, Pecoson, James City-Williamsburg, and Charles City, and we received three special awards on last Thursday, March 21st. So at this time, I would like to call Terry Anderson, PTA President of Spratley Gifted Center, and Dr. Crum, Sylvia Mallory, PTA President, William M. Cooper Elementary, and Mr. Hollerin, Tina Leatherberry, President of Ash, I'm sorry, Armstrong, I'm looking at Ashbury, Armstrong School for the Arts, and Ms. Stovall. What I want you to know about each of these schools is not only did their schools reach 100% membership for their PTA, they overachieved 100% for their PTAs. Spratley Gifted Center has 104.4% membership, which is a 29.65% increase from last year. Cooper has 103.79% membership with a 3.03% increase over last year, and Armstrong has 101.59% membership with a 19.11% membership. Now, what makes this significant is in that district, in our district that we participate in, there are 108 schools. We were in Newport News. Hampton was the only district that had schools with 100% membership. So let's give them another round of applause. And so what I am presenting them with tonight is a state certificate, as well as the district certificate, for achieving 100% membership at both for the state requirements, district requirements, and their increase in membership certificates, along with a letter, and I will read. It says, "Dear Presidents Mallory Anderson and Leatherberry, congratulations on reaching 100% membership of your PTA. You must be proud of your accomplishment. Please display your award certificate with honor so that all in your school will see it. It is a sign of the strong PTA you have. I am sure you did some creative programming and used some innovative strategies to grow your membership. Please share them with us by emailing our VPofMembership@virginianpta.org. We look forward to highlighting PTA success stories in our monthly membership article in our e-newsletter, The Voice. Again, on behalf of the Virginia PTA, congratulations." And this is on behalf of Anne Carson, our State President, and Debbie Kilpatrick, I'm sorry, Vice President of Membership.
I just want to say this is a special honor for me to be able to be here to present you with these certificates on behalf of the school board. As a past PTA president myself, I know how truly difficult this is to attain. It's very difficult, and if you don't understand what 100% means, what they do is they actually divide the number of PTA members by the number of students in that school. So that means for every child in these schools, there's at least one PTA member, and that ratio is staggering, and we always need school support like that. Everybody knows parental involvement is a key to our student success, and for them to have that, especially in these difficult budget times, to have that support is incredible, and it shows a lot on the side of your PTA boards, that organization and hard work and just sacrifice, and on top of these principals and your administration and your teachers, because it's a partnership, and without your support, they couldn't do what they need to do. So it's just really a great accomplishment for your entire school family. So if anybody else from these schools is here tonight, if you'd be willing to stand to be recognized. These certificates are signed by the Chair, Martha Mugler, and our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Linda Shiflett, in recognition of 100% PTA state membership.
Let's have another round of applause for these wonderful girls. Thank you so much. Our next two awards are very special, and they speak to the kinds of wonderful schools we have in this Hampton School Division. And to present these awards and to tell you a little bit about it, I'd like to call on Dr. Patricia Leary, who is the Executive Director for Elementary School Leadership.
Thank you. This is an exciting evening. We have so many wonderful schools and students and parents and teachers to recognize, but the two awards I'm about to tell you about are particularly exciting. The first award is called the Board of Education Excellence Award, and there were 51 schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia who received this award. Schools that get the Board of Education Excellence Awards have to meet all state and federal accountability measures for two years in a row and make significant progress towards other goals established by the Board of Education. So it is my pleasure to congratulate and recognize Asbury Elementary for this award. And Dr. McIntyre, if you could please come forward. The second award is called the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. This award also requires that schools meet academic standards, federal and state, for two years in a row, and make progress towards other goals as established by the Board of Education, and it gives me great pleasure to recognize Armstrong School of the Arts for this particular award. Congratulations, Ms. Stovall. So I mentioned there were 51 schools that received the Excellence Awards, and in the Commonwealth of Virginia, there were 98 schools that got the distinguished award. So it is just so exciting to have wonderful schools in our midst and to know that they are standouts in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So congratulations to all of you.
I just want to add a couple quotes regarding these accomplishments, that when this was announced, Governor McDonnell said, "Excellence doesn't just happen. It is achieved through hard work and a commitment to continuous improvement and innovation. I congratulate the students for the accomplishments these awards recognize, and the outstanding teachers and other educators who prepared them to excel. We're blessed to have some of the finest schools and teachers in the nation." And then the Virginia Secretary of Education followed it up with, "Each of these schools is setting the standard we should expect for every school in the Commonwealth. Without hard-working educators in the classroom, these success stories wouldn't be possible." So I couldn't say anything better than that. So congratulations so much. I want to forget to have these schools stand up, because it looks like there's a huge amount of them.
Congratulations again. I'll tell you something when the governor is talking your school's horns, and I'm just real happy that. I'm kind of like Ms. Halpin. I'm just glad to be here, Ms. Halpin. I'll tell you. Now, for the next award, I'd like to call on two very special people. Vivian Greasy, who is the Curriculum Leader for Fine Arts, and Kelly D., who is a Teacher Specialist for Fine Arts. Let's help welcome them to the stage. The reason we've asked them to come forward tonight is because, for the second year in a row, Hampton City Schools has been recognized as a best community for music education in the United States. You can go ahead and clap. I'm going to leave some on. The National Association of Music Merchants, it's called NAMM, has recognized Hampton City Schools for its outstanding commitment to music education. This designation, it's important to note, was awarded to only 307 school districts out of 2,000 applicants from across the country. And it was stated that it's because of the community, its leaders, its teachers, and its parents, who believe in music education and together are working to ensure that it is part of a complete education for children. Let's have a big round of applause for these students.
Congratulations on this huge accomplishment. We all know that music and the arts are critical to our students, and that you make it this high of a level for our Hampton City School students is incredible. So thank you for all you do, and I have this certificate to present you on behalf of the board. It just congratulates you as recipient of the National Association for Music Merchants Foundation Best Community for Music Education Award, signed by Chair Martha Mugler and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Linda Shiflett. So thank you so much.
At this time, we'd like to move on to the next recognition. If I could please call up Mr. Jerry Lancaster from the Bethel High School Band, the Bethel High School Band Director, and his student leadership, please. Each school year on the high school level, the Virginia Music Educators Association, the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association host a state marching band assessment, and in the spring, they host a state concert band assessment. Bands participate based on a rubric and standards, and they're adjudicated by a panel of music educators that have performed to the highest level in our state for well over a decade, and they evaluate the marching band and the concert band. The Bethel High School Band this year earned a superior rating with their marching band, and also a superior rating with their concert band. When a high school band does that in the state of Virginia, they earn the recognition as a Virginia Honor Band. So we'd like to congratulate them for that. This is very special, because this is the first time in the history of the Bethel High School that the band has earned this recognition. Mr. Lancaster's been with us in Hampton City Schools for 16 years, 12 years at Spratley, and four years at Bethel, and this is the fourth year they've been working towards this recognition, this designation. So I want to congratulate them and give them an opportunity to introduce his student leaders and any school administrators that are here.
With me today are four of my senior student leaders that hold top positions in our marching band, and two of these students also participated with the symphonic band that helped to earn this award. First, we have Alexis Vega, who has acted as our senior drum major this year with the marching band, and is our first-chair flute player with the symphonic band. Next to her is Tanaya Claude, who was our brass captain with the marching band and is our first-chair trumpet player in the symphonic band. And the last two ladies down there were our color guard captains with the flagline with the marching band this year, and that's Diamond Osby and Ashley Stewart. Terribly sorry. Also over here is Mr. Ralph Saunders, Principal of Bethel High School.
A little shorter. Congratulations. That's a wonderful achievement, and I know a lot due to your great leadership and teaching, and to these students, you must have been in a lot of hours of practicing and hard work. So be very proud of yourselves for that. And on behalf of the school board, we'll present you with a certificate for Bethel High School Band, named a 2013 Virginia Honors Band, signed by Martha Mugler, Chair, and Dr. Linda Shiflett, Superintendent. Thank you so much.
Congratulations again, and it's so interesting, because when I was nodding to Mr. D., I wanted him to say something about how outstanding it is for us yet again to be named a best communities for music education. And he and Ms. Greasy, of course, they're very humble, so they went right into introducing the Bethel people, and we really do appreciate your honor. But let's have another round of applause for being for two years in a row. That is absolutely fantastic. Annette, I'd like to call on two teachers, Sophia Christian Holiday and Delrose Atkinson. They look like students, don't they?
They're just saying they look like students.
And I tell you, every time I see these two ladies, I say two words, "I'm hungry." They are the culinary arts teachers at Phoebus High School, and the reason we've asked them to come forward is because the Phoebus High School Culinary Arts Program- to come forward is because the Phoebus High School Culinary Arts Program, along with the Phoebus High School Culinary Arts Management Team, and we're showing pictures on the screen, both competed in the Virginia Pro Start Student Invitational Culinary Competition. And we are happy to announce on this stage, both teams took first place. Now, they will move depending on to compete in the invitational, which is going to be held in Baltimore, understand? So they're going national now. And I've got to tell you, the management team, as I understand, is the one that has to sell their restaurant idea to investors. And the culinary team, I looked at that menu, and I can tell you, there were things I hadn't even heard of on there, but it was just excellent. And I sent a picture of Andy, there it is, look at that. Doesn't that look Top Chef? I don't know what it is, but I want it. And I tell you, they are the best ever. So let's have a round of applause for winning both, the Culinary Arts Program and the Management Team.
I'm very honored to be able to present this to you on behalf of the board, and I have dined in the Blue Phantom Inn before, and I had some of your food last night at the Council PTA event, and always impressive and always good, and I know you're teaching the kids a lot more than just making a good recipe, but all of the health regulations behind it and the marketing and such. So it's just wonderful, wonderful program. So thank you for all you do. And I have two certificates here for you, one for the Culinary Arts Management Team and one for the Culinary Arts Program, both for first place. Congratulations. Yes, yes. Thank you for reminding me that. I'd love for any students that are here tonight, please stand, and if you all would like to introduce them.
So from the culinary team, we have sophomore Jordan Mans, then we also have Shondala Waters, who's a senior, Andrew Elder, who's also a senior, Kari, I don't know her last name, she's a junior, and then Ms. Exon, finish off.
We have Kari Morgan Britt, junior, and Cameron Figueroa, who's a junior, Kimon Jacobs, he's a junior, and Deontre Williams is a senior. Oh my goodness. He travels from Hampton to Phoebus for the culinary program. And Shondala, and it's important for Andrew to say that he travels from Kickitán. So it's the Hampton City Schools Culinary Arts Program.
You know, I told you, I just get so excited about these students, so when I found out they won, I did download the menu. I just couldn't help it. Evidence for this competition, listen to this now, here was the appetizer. Chesapeake Bay Blue Crab and Avocado Stack appetizer. Entree, Pan-Seared Virginia Rock Fish with Sun-Dried Tomato Risotto. Doesn't sound like anything I'm cooking at home. And dessert, Chocolate Pudding Cake. Not chocolate pudding, took it to another level. Chocolate pudding cake with Honey Lime Whipped Cream. Let's have it for some of the fine chefs and management team around.
Do they have any parents here? Their parents.
Now, any of the parents here of these wonderful chefs and management team, any of the parents here, would please like to, please stand. Yes, please stand and be recognized over here too. Congratulations again. Ms. Phillips just told me, you had to read that menu, didn't you? Now I'm hungry. I know. From Hampton High School, for our last award, I'd like to call on two science teachers who made it big. Elizabeth Ciancio and Joyce Corriere. Is Elizabeth here? Okay, I thought maybe she wasn't coming up because I mispronounced her name. Exactly, you do. We have a Hampton City Schools newsletter that we put out that speaks to the accomplishments of our faculty and staff. And we were working on the one that will be coming out tomorrow, and on the front page, you will have a picture of these two science teachers. Because it seems that Shell Science Lab Challenge was held, and when I'm talking about shell, I'm talking about the shell, you know how you go pump the gas, that shell. The Shell Science Lab Challenge was held, and what they were looking for in terms of competition, they were encouraging teachers in grades six through 12 in the United States and Canada to share their approaches to innovative ways in which to deliver quality lab experiences with limited school and laboratory resources. So that was the competition. Well, we're proud to announce tonight that these two teachers, Elizabeth and Joyce, from Hampton High School, have been named, they only picked four finalists and one grand, have been named national finalists in the Shell Science Lab Challenge, national winners. Let's hear it for them. Now, before I ask Ms. Corriere to tell you a little bit about the collaborative effort to make this happen, you need to know that the two of them were the only winners from the entire state of Virginia. We had it right here, 757, right here at Hampton High. And this is what was written in the press release. It said, "As the oldest of the four high schools in Hampton City Schools, Hampton High's science classrooms lack many essentials, Corriere and Ciancio..." Is that how you pronounce her name? I got it. Okay. Corriere and Ciancio, her, must seek creative ways to meet their students' needs. So their students use a virtual online lab bench to test their experiments. They would like to have the chemistry classrooms fully renovated to support their vision, which is to integrate science technology, engineering, and mathematics, STEM, and to have students work in teams on challenging experiments. What did they win? They will receive a science lab makeover support package for Hampton High School valued at $8,500. The prize includes a $3,000 Shell Cash Grant, $3,000 in donated lab equipment, $1,000 in National Science Teachers Association prizes, and an expense-paid trip to attend the 2013 National Conference in San Antonio. Now, let's have a round of applause.
What I do want to say is, it was not just Liz and I that did this. We have seven students here. Alan, you're going to do the introductions, please. That helped make a video. They were, and we had less than 24 hours to put the video together, because they never notified us that we won. So they gave us a 24-hour extension to get the video submitted to them and for the competition. So these kids, after they went through two exams during the day, they sat after school, came up with their scripts, and they did the video that helped us win. So they need to be recognized for their efforts. Alan?
It gives me great pleasure to welcome to the stage David Horda, Bhakti Desai, Michaela Rice, Milan Brooks, Alyssa Cozy, and Cassie Villarreal.
And we also need to thank three teachers at our school, the library, and helped us video, because I don't know anything about that. We had one of our young teachers put all the video together, because I definitely don't know anything about that one. And we had our art teacher make all our signs for us, so we could show 1958 and 2013, and no change. So, and also, we need to call up our two principals, Dr. Grove and Ms. Allison. Ms. Allison, you're not getting out of this, come on. They have something for y'all.
Hi, good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to thank Ms. Corriere, she's being quite humble. She and Ms. Ciancio have worked diligently, a veteran teacher, and Ms. Ciancio is a first-year teacher at Hampton High School. So the two of them came together, collaborated on this project, and without the support of Mrs. Booth back there as well, this would not have been possible. She has been quite supportive of Hampton High School, the IB program, and our science department. Thank you also to these young people who did quite an exceptional job in the video. We also have a young man who is an alum of Hampton High School, Joshua, who is at Harvard, who is unable to be here, but he was on vacation and was very excited about helping out. So congratulations to everyone, and thank you once again.
Well, this looks like quite a team effort, from administration to teachers to students to everybody, especially those two teachers that made sure that this happened. And thank you just so much, because innovation in science is very important and very wonderful. And I've got certificates for you and your coworker, because I can't say her name. And then I've got a surprise for each of the students here from Hampton City Schools. Thank you so much.
I shall. Didn't realize I was going to do so much talking this evening. The Science Educator is a digital green newsletter. 2,000 individuals across the state of Virginia receive this, including VDOE, and our students and our two teachers are featured on the cover of this newsletter, and our students have received a copy and a frame. And thank you very much to the school board and Dr. Shiflett for recognizing us this evening.
Are the parents of any of these students here, if the parents are here, please stand and be recognized. If the parents are here, got it here, here, saw you. That's great. Again, national competition, thank you so much. Ms. Corriere, do you have anything else to say? Because I take my cues from you. Okay, she doesn't like speaking, never turned down a mic. Okay, thank you so much. Just have another round of applause. And tonight, we talked about national winners, and I would be remiss if when we talked about the culinary arts people at Phoebus, if we didn't recognize, he was trying to get out the door, Mr. William Beverly, Principal at Phoebus, and Mr. Bruce Garwin, your Assistant Principal. Thank you for so much support and wonderful program. This concludes our recognitions for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens, Chair, and congratulations to all those individuals that we recognized tonight, from students to instructional staff, to administrators, to Fine Arts Department, to our military partners. We thank you all so much for all the good works that you do for Hampton City Schools.
We move now to the hearing of any delegations, presentation of any written communications or petitions regarding the superintendent's proposed 2013-2014 school operating budget. Speakers are required to limit their comments to a maximum of five minutes in accordance with school board policy BDDH. And our first speaker tonight will be Mr. Eugene Ward.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Ward.
I represent the custodians of Hampton City Schools. When I learned of the cut of the custodians, it kind of bothered me in a way, because sometimes we feel like we're the last ones on the button, the Job's Button, Coke Button. And I feel that we do a marvelous jobs at our schools. Whenever you walk into one of these schools, we greet you and we show you the presentation of what we do. We hope that so many of you see the work that we do. It's not an easy task when you have anywhere from 1,200 to 1,300 kids running around in a school. And when you walk in, in your presentation that we try to give you, we try to give you what? Help our children along. A clean school, give them clean minds. When you see graffiti on the walls or anything on the lockers, we're there to clean it off. You walk in the bathrooms, you don't smell the bathrooms. They're clean, and I think we present ourselves in a way that Hampton City Schools would be proud of us. I think that since I've been a custodian for 12 years, I think that we've been cut here and there, cut here and there, and then I know within the last four years, we haven't had any upraising of salaries or anything. And I think we come as a group of people who work together to try to keep things together in the school. And it just bothers me for us to just keep getting cut down, cut down, the pay get cut down, and I think we do our best. So I would just want to ask you just to take another thought in mind of what a custodian does. We look at everything else that goes on, and we make the attributes of the awards who did this, but we never get an award for anything that we do. Never. And I think it needs to be put somewhere in the program where you would say to us, "A job well done." Sometimes that's all it takes. But we work as a team, our custodian staff throughout this city of Hampton, we work as a team, and we try to keep things in order for you to come in and see the beauty of the things that we do do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. And we are proud of our custodial staff. Our next speaker is Beverly Jo Satterfield.
Good evening, Ms. Satterfield.
I am coming to speak to you this evening from a very difficult place. I read in the Daily Press today that there is no outcry from the budget cuts that the city of Hampton schools are facing. And when I tell you I spend many sleepless hours of what I see on a day-to-day basis in Hampton City Schools, and what you are attempting to do will be devastating to so many people. And you will fail to meet your strategic goal for 2015 if you continue the path that you're on currently with your cuts. And one of the things that I'm going to talk to you about is transportation. I don't know how you can cut transportation when the city of Hampton's transportation system is so poor that if we had to rely on... system is so poor that if we had to rely on city transportation to get our kids back and forth to school, they would never get to school, and they would never get home. And then you want to cut everything that is the least valuable in the budget. I see where you want to cut after you've awarded music and art. You want to cut that from elementary school. But you have never seen the kids dance barefoot around to a music video of the Nutcracker Suite in kindergarten. You don't see what goes on when the children are playing and coloring in preschool. And just so you know where I'm coming from, I am a substitute teacher. And I get up every morning, going to every school from pre-K to high school, all throughout the city of Hampton, and I love what I do. And you know that I get paid barely nothing for doing it. Okay? And so this is not for me. When I tell you I'm speaking from a rock and a hard place, I'm speaking on behalf of the teachers who are afraid and fearful to speak up for their own jobs because of the positions that they're being put in. And what you are asking them to do with nothing. You're offering them a 2% increase, and that don't even begin to touch the out-of-pocket expense that they incur every school year, two and three times a year, buying for the children. And all you can do is scrape up 2% for them. You want to cut instructional assistance, but you don't know what the sacrifice instructional assistants have to do to teach children. You spent hundreds of thousands, possibly millions of dollars, on computer equipment for children, and the teachers can barely use them because they're not enough for all of the kids? Or the children are using this equipment to play games in the midst of the teachers trying to teach. So I'm just saying to you, reevaluate what you're cutting. We can ill afford to lose transportation, and we can ill afford to lose those people in the cafeteria who clean up every day for barely nothing. And you want to cut that. You're cutting from the wrong places. Transportation and cafeteria aids is the last place you need to be cutting from. And that's all I can say for right now.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. And I assure you that the cuts that are proposed in this year's budget are not anything that anyone in this school division or on this school board wants to make. We have been in an incredibly unusual and difficult economic climate for the last five years, and we are operating with approximately $24 million less today than we were in 2008. And we are looking today at a shortfall of $8 million. So we understand and hear your concerns, and we hear them.
So I just tell you this, okay? I do a lot of reading, research, and there are universities and colleges in Washington, D.C., fighting for their money. And what they say, they're doing whatever they can to make noise about the budget cuts.
Yes, ma'am, and we are too.
And so, you know, when you talk about community, you know, we can take those same buses that you're talking about cutting, and we can all go to Washington, D.C., and make noise too. Because these people are talking about getting $1.65 billion. And they're saying, John Hopkins University Vice Provost research said this is not a time, that this is a time to be doubling down and not backing off.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, I sure do. Our next speaker is Ms. Galene Conoyton York.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Conoyton York.
I am here to, first, I want to thank Dr. Shiflett and our city manager, Mary Bunting, for putting on an excellent joint budget meetings. This is the first time that this has ever happened. It happened in the high schools. Our parents showed up and showed out, and I'm so very happy and proud of our parents for showing up at the meetings. Now, they may not be here, but we live in an urban city, and our city is different than Pecosin and Williamsburg and Yorktown, and we may not show up in large numbers because our challenges are much deeper than other cities and smaller cities. But we showed up at the budget meetings in large numbers, because we showed up there because we knew that the survey did two things. We were able to air our concerns through our vote on the survey, and we was able to say that we wanted, we were able to let city council know that we wanted to increase taxes to save our schools. And so, we may not come here and speak, but the outcry was there. And we did a lot of research behind the scenes. We talked to many of our board members. We know, we sent emails, made phone calls, had community meetings, and we did a number of things to show our concerns. And we live in a day and time that we may not confer a meeting here, but we're watching it on television, and we're keeping up on emails, and we're keeping up with what's going on through social media to know what's going on in our schools. And so, we need to keep the momentum of reaching out to our parents in different ways. There was research done that showed that, which I was supporting, keeping the eight-block program, and many other parents were too, instead of just going back to the seven-block, I mean, seven-period program. The seven-period program has been around for 100 years. The eight-block period has been around since 1999, and in 1996, there was an article that the Daily Press did that said they overwhelmingly supported. It was a group of teachers that had done their research, and I hope that we can continue. I'm not wedded to the eight-block program, but I want to make sure that we have the best that we can give to our children. There's other programs out there. I'm sure we have enough teachers that might want to do a research like they did back in 1996, or see what other programs are available. We should do the research instead of picking up the phone, calling other superintendents in cities like Pecosin's to see if the seven-period works well, because Pecosin is definitely different than Hampton. So I just wanted to come here and say, and also the teachers cut, the teachers being cut, and special ed, and numerous of things. I agree with the young man that spoke about it, the custodial service. I mean, the way you feel when you come into a school, cleanliness is very important to our students. It makes, it helps with your behaviors. Transportation is important as well, and I know that you're in a tough decision, that you are right now, but I tell you, we would go to city council, and we would actually tell them to speak, I mean, to ask them to increase, you know, the taxes as well. But one thing that we learned, we learned that if we don't have a strong public school system, we won't have businesses moving to the area, we won't have increased jobs, we won't have a housing market, a strong housing market. And so therefore, a strong public school system is definitely the essence of a strong city. So there is an outcry that's out there, and we are all concerned, but we've been showing our concerns in different ways, and we may not always show up here, but yes, we are concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Conoyton York. Our next speaker is Mr. Devonte Green.
Good afternoon, members of the school board. Good afternoon, Dr. Shiflett. I mean, the first thing I'd like to say is that the gentleman that spoke before me about the janitor service, I remember being a part of Hampton City Schools and seeing him work, and phenomenal job. And like you said, you can't discount the work that janitors do. When I think back on it, they were a big part of elementary school. I remember Mr. Futrell at Moton Elementary was a big part of growing up and being a young man. He taught you a lot of life lessons. So that made me think back. But of course, the budget, and of course, you all have been put in an unfortunate situation, and it's very difficult, and we understand. But that shouldn't stop us today, tomorrow, right now, from saying this won't happen again. The school board, the students, the parents, as one, will ask for investment in the city of Hampton and our children from the city council. It's time to put pressure on city council, as one, because we're all one, to ask for this investment, because when we continue to make these cuts, when we continue to go to a seven-block system, I can tell you, coming out of high school, taking primarily AP classes, going into Thomas Nelson. There still was a little bit of that lag time, but I was more prepared than I felt, than I would be with a seven-block system. And if the goal is to prepare children for the workforce or college, we shouldn't be making steps away from that. So basically, tonight, I would just like to say, you know, unfortunately, we're taking one on the chin this year, but it doesn't have to stop us from right now, putting together a strategic plan, as one, students, community, teachers, school board, of what we'd like to see, investing in our future, which is the children, because it doesn't make us any brighter as a town, and the city's future is dimmer if our children's future isn't brighter. So this is something we can work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. We couldn't agree more. I encourage all the speakers who have made public comment tonight on the budget to remain with us for the superintendent's presentation of the budget and our vote on that tonight. So encourage you all to continue on with us. I have one more speaker who has signed up to speak, and it indicates on the document that you were here to speak on a personnel status. Ms. Thompson. But it is not appropriate for the school board to entertain comments regarding confidential personnel matters, even if raised by the grieving employees in our public meetings. So we can't hear anything regarding any personnel matters in this public meeting. Pardon me? We can't entertain any conversation regarding a personnel matter at this public meeting. I believe your rights are available to you through the Personnel, Human Resources Office, and you can check with them first to see what your avenue is. Okay, and... Okay. If you'd like to submit something to us in writing, we can do that, but we can't hear anything in a public forum regarding personnel. She can do that. Are you, I'm sorry, are you... Okay, yeah. I'm going on a form that she submitted to me. You didn't wish to speak on the budget? Okay. All right. We move now to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, which consists of the personnel report and the field trips as indicated in board docs.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye.
Motion carries. We move on now to superintendent and staff reports. And I call on Superintendent Dr. Linda Shiflett to present our reports.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Our first report this evening is going to be done by Dr. Cynthia Cooper, and it's a summary of our climate surveys. As you're aware, we periodically do surveys to determine various aspects of Hampton City Schools, and I've asked Dr. Cooper to present the results for us tonight. Thank you, Dr. Cooper.
Good evening, Dr. Cooper.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler. Mr. Kilgore, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board, I'm very pleased to be here tonight to share with you the results of this year's climate survey. And let's go ahead and get started. The remote worked. That's the first victory of tonight. Just a quick run-through of what we'll be talking about. First, why do we give a climate survey? What value does it have for us? Who participates in the survey? What is the group response rate? Also, wanted to talk with you about the survey design a little bit and why that matters, and the dimensions of climate that we ask about in each of the surveys. Then finally, the bulk of the presentation is about the results that we've received. And then, of course, the most important part, I think, is what are we going to do with that information? What is the next step? When you talk about climate, you really have to read research, and if you're in HR management or if you look at a variety of journals on education, or even, you know, there's a whole field of sports psychology, the way people feel about things really impacts their productivity, impacts their engagement, and often impacts outcomes. In HR management, they talk about the affective part of work really making a difference in whether your employees decide to stay with you or not. So that's why climate matters. The survey also helps us to identify the progress that we've made. We do these surveys annually, and we try to reduce the changes that we make in the survey so that we have a valid comparison from one year to the next, to see if we're trending in the right direction in areas that we've identified for growth. It helps us identify concerns. Sometimes, young people tell us things that we weren't aware of, rarely, but sometimes they do have some insight from a different vantage point so that they tell us things that we need to take action on, that we haven't been aware of. It also allows us, when we ask several different people about climate, we ask the adults in the organization, the instructional staff, the support staff, and the young people who attend school with us, if we ask them all about the same things, we get three different vantage points. And often, that identifies for us either areas that were not evident in one group, or sometimes that we have to take a different approach because we don't have good communication. The perceptions are different because we don't have good communication between one group and another. So those are some things we'll cover tonight. And then the biggest thing, what is our analysis of impact? How does this actually affect our outcomes in our organization? All right, let's talk about who takes it. And you're going to notice a huge bump in our student participation rate. It went up by 40%. That's because we did some work around that. Last year, our secondary students were given an opportunity to take the survey out of school time. They could log on and take it if they wanted to. And often, our young people are very busy after school, and so our response rate at secondary was only 26%, and they do constitute well over half of our population. So this year, we facilitated the opportunity for them in school. Our students who take the survey are fifth graders through seniors, and you'll see that we made a huge gain, close to 5,000 more young people participated this year. And that's important when we look at results, because the population that took the survey this year is likely to be more representative than the survey takers last year who self-selected. So I want us to keep that in mind when we look at the results. Our participation rate among staff also went up. You can see the instructional staff bumped by 3% and the support staff by 6%. Again, this is entirely voluntary, and that's a good sign. When people who don't have to take a survey do, it means that they know that their voice counts. And so, some of the actions that have been taken in this division as a result of things that we've learned from the climate survey, I think, continue to spur participation and let people know that it really does matter what they say to us here. Let's talk a little bit about the survey itself. In order to keep... In order to keep it short, we use an adaptive model. For those of you who are big survey fans, that also means using logic features. So that it's customized as the individual takes the survey. And the first way that that happens is it's customized by who the participants are. So if I click the box that says I'm an instructional assistant, I get questions that are germane to me. If I click the box that says I'm a principal, I get questions that work for me. It also is customized by response. So in many of the instances, we have essential questions, and we say, "Do you agree with a statement that the principal in the school provides effective leadership?" And if I say, "Yes, I do agree," then I move on to the next question. If I don't agree with that, then I'm asked several follow-up questions, because we want to know more information about that, or else we won't be able to get any better. Then the final thing that's slightly different is that we use some variable rating scales, depending on the type of question. So that young people who are asked to comment on adults in the school are caring, they interact with tons of adults in their schools. So we used a behavior frequency scale for those sorts of things, and just an agree or disagree scale, a Likert scale in both instances, but it is differentiated by question type. All right. These are the types of things that we ask about. Since teaching and learning is our core business, instead of having just an essential question on it, this year, we asked everybody all the questions we wanted to know on teaching and learning. So all the instructional staff entered a full set of questions, as did the students who took the survey. The other questions are essential questions or trigger questions, and they're on parent engagement. That's both students and staff answer that. Safety and behavior is of both students and staff. Support for both adults and young people is asked of both groups, as are their perceptions of maintenance, operations, which includes food and nutrition, and transportation, as well as technology. And the leadership questions go only to the adults in the organization. And now we get to the big part. There's a lot of numbers on that slide. What you'll notice is that we have a comparison of two years of results. So 2012, the sort of yellowish-orange stripe is the most current result, and the blue stripe is last year's results. So, this is our staff, and it's just the overall slide that shows you a comparison of this year to last year in all of the different essential areas. And you'll notice that the bars are very, very similar. Most of the differentiations were only 1%, which is really within a percentage of a margin of error. You'll see a slight drop in perceptions about safety and behavior. You see an increase in perceptions of parent engagement, and an increase in perceptions about school maintenance. Most of the others are really holding steady. These are the two years' worth of an overall slide for young people, and you're going to see some huge differences there. And this is where I need to remind you that that very much could be due to the fact that we have 5,000 more survey takers, and those 5,000 more survey takers are all middle and high school students. And if you look at trends in survey data among young people, you'll see that elementary students are often the most positive, middle school students the second most positive, and high school students less positive. So, in answering that trend, or following that logic, you'll see that some of the areas that are noted for concern are probably due to changes in the respondents. But there are some really interesting and cool things, and I think it's pretty marvelous that the students answered that their parents are involved. 84%, that's a large number of respondents, and it's up by 20%. You see increases in their perceptions of safety and behavior, and holding steady in technology. You can clearly see the areas are dropping. When we go through these individual areas, I'll tell you more about those. First, I want to start with the teaching and learning. This is the staff's perception of teaching and learning. And you can see the questions. I won't read them all for you, but generally, they're positive about setting expectations for young people, about curriculum assessment, helping students, very positive about giving timely and appropriate feedback about students' work. Their lowest area of response was that students at the school are learning what they need to know to be successful in the next grade level and after graduation. And what we don't know right there is, is it that the program is not providing what the students need, or is it that the students are not learning everything that the program is providing? So, we do have to look a little deeper in these, and the only reason I bring that up is to let you know that it's, you don't always know the details right off the bat. Let's take a look at what students said. They do say that teachers communicate well with them on what they need to do to do well in school. Another high point is school counselors giving them advice for academic planning and moving on to post-secondary. They don't rate us as highly on the feedback that we give. Only 63% of them feel like we give them, tell them adequately how they do on tests and quizzes. You'll see some things that are real areas of concern, and we'll be working on those, and those are challenging. Am I challenged by this work? And also, do I know how it's related to life outside the classroom? Let's move forward a little bit and talk about the staff's perception of leadership. It is great to see some jumps here. It matters because that's one of, if you look at the HR review, a lot of the teacher retention issues, the top two things are, do I have a capable leader at the helm of the organization? And you'll see that we get a good vote of confidence there. And then, the second thing that you'll see in HR management that keeps people coming back is their collaborative relationships that they have. Do they get to work with other people, and do they feel supported? And again, we see good responses there from our staff. Then we asked about student support. And you see, on the left, it's how adults answered about student support, and on the right, you'll see a bar chart that shows how students perceive it. And you'll see some differences there. Overall, I'd just like to look at that overall slide, is that generally, those things match up pretty well. Students rating a slightly lower, but still, the trends are the same, and the student responses are better this year than they were last year, and that's a very cool thing. Looking at parent engagement, again, we have a side-by-side, and this is one of those things where comparison of perceptions is very interesting. When you look at how adults feel about parent engagement, you'll see overall, it's only a 62% agreement that parents are engaged enough. When you see young people, it's an 84% agreement. So, that tells me that there's some differences in perception between young people and between adults in our organization about what the expectations of parents should be, and we're going to need to have some conversation about that to get better. Safety and behavior, you'll see that these are very, very similar. That is very encouraging to me. It means our adults are perceiving the same thing that young people are perceiving in our organization. Where there are concerns, they're shared by both adults and young people. So this is very good news, both that the student perception of safety is going up and improved behavior, and that there is a correlation between what adults and young people feel. Here's a disconnect again. This is school maintenance and cleanliness, and I think this is not a case, when I pondered those results and I looked at some of the back documentation, it's not so much as people seeing the same thing differently. This one could very well be people seeing different things. When I'm adult in the organization, I have my office, or I have my desk in the classroom. I have a lounge or a break room that I might share with other adults, and we share responsibility for keeping it clean. There is limited access to my personal space in the classroom. I'm the only one who sits at my desk, whereas young people are sitting at a desk in eight different classrooms, and hundreds of children have sat in those desks and used that equipment and been in and out of restrooms. And so, what adults perceive as acceptable levels of cleanliness for their space, I think, is different for young people, because they're looking at a lot broader space. They're eating in a cafeteria that's shared by 400 children. So, you will see that that is a big area of concern for us, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. Staff's perception of school operations, generally good, the same that they were last year. You'll see young people, their questions are actually broken down into the two areas. One is about food service, and the other about transportation. And the concerns that young people share with us about food and nutritional services is the type of food, because they would much prefer to have something from Taco Bell or McDonald's. It is more flavorful, although it doesn't meet FDA regulations. And the quantity of food served. They'd like to supersize it, and the federal regulations don't allow us to do that. So, those are the two things. They do give us a shout-out and say that the cafeteria staff is not the issue. The staff and the grown-ups that we interact with, that's fine. We'd like more food, and we'd like it to be different, please. When they talk to us about school buses, those are getting better, and I wanted to point that out, that we are trending in the right direction. They share a concern about feeling safe at the bus stop, and occasionally feeling safe on the bus. And not about the safety of the driver or the transportation we're providing, but how other students are acting on the bus. When we take a look at technology, you'll see that these are almost identical, what students say about technology and what adults say about technology. Any complaint at all is from a very small number of folks, and it is about access to enough technology and having it up-to-date. Then the final question that we ask young people is, do you like school? Now, we don't know which one they're answering, because we ask them to agree or disagree with a statement, "I like my school." And so, I might say no to that, but it could be that I don't like any school. It could be that you could send me to Yale, and I would not like it, that the experience of education is not good for me. Or it could be that I just don't like this school. And so, we ask them to tell us more about that when they answer in the negative. But still, when we have 62% of our young people say, "I like school," and another, almost 30%, it's 28% say, "I don't," that 28% still has to come to school every day. And so, we really need to work to make that experience turn around for them, because it is a very important part of their lives, and we do know that how they feel about school can have an effect on how they do in school and whether they stay in school. So, we are following up on that question. There's a whole set of responses that they can then give us to tell us more about that. The final thing that we do is, that I want to share with you tonight, is talk about what we do with this stuff. I really like it, because I'm a researcher, but not everybody really likes all of these numbers. Although I am pleased to say that before mid-year, principals were saying, "Do you have my results yet? Do you have my results yet? When are we going to get the results? Have the results posted?" And we put them into their school learning plan folders, and they get an aggregate report of what young people said in percentages. The identities of young people are kept confidential. They get an aggregate report of what adults said. Again, those are confidential. They only ever see percentages of folks. But then they also get all of the detailed information that comes behind it. So if I said, "I didn't like my school," and there's a block that says, "Tell me why you don't like school," they get all the verbatim comments. Hundreds, literally, hundreds of comments. I believe there were 85 pages of comments from all of these different surveys that went out. And so, they get all of those, and they can really take action to change the things that are perceived as needing to be changed in their schools. Then, our next step is hearing plans to address issues. A great deal happens from the executive directors of school leadership. They meet with principals, they talk about those surveys, they talk and listen, and see if there's any support that we need to offer from a central office level to improve things at the school. They also, I know that department directors will be meeting with Dr. Shiflett to go over their plans to address issues that came out in the climate survey, what we need to do about school cleanliness, what we need to do about perceptions of maintenance. And then, some of the things we need to do are plans to improve perceptions. One of the things that I noticed in those two things that disconnected was that young people and adults answered differently about student support systems, and adults had more positive feelings about that. Well, to me, that says that young people might not know all of the support systems that are out there that the adults are well aware of. So one of the things that we're talking about doing is, let's come up with some ways that we can communicate all of the different things that we offer, so that young people who might not know about those opportunities can take advantage of them. And then the final thing that we'll be working on is linking this data to actual outcomes, to see if the research overall really holds true in Hampton City Schools. And what actually matters about climate to our young people, does it have an effect on their grades? Does it have an effect on their school attendance? Do the way, does the way that adults feel about school actually affect our teacher turnover rate? The things that we take for granted from national research, we're actually going to put into play here, so that we can give some clear direction to folks on where to focus their efforts in the upcoming months and years, to continue to make us a better organization. And that's what I had to share with you. Your results will be anonymous here. If you have questions, please check one. Seriously, I would be available to answer any questions.
Oh, you really can click on it.
No, you can't click on it, I'm sorry.
I did, I just clicked. Anyway, so thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Questions from board members?
Mrs. Smith?
I just had a couple of quick ones. When was the survey done exactly? I don't remember if she said that.
We launched it, it was available right after we came back from the Thanksgiving break, and it was available to young people and instructional staff from December 1st is when they really started to respond, through when we left for winter break.
Okay, so this would represent like what they saw the first few months of school, the first three or four months? Okay, that's what I was trying to get a feel for.
It is. It's long enough for folks to get an idea, especially ninth graders coming into a school, to get them, give them time to acclimate to the school and make some evaluative judgments.
Okay, great. And that increase in student participation was really good. That's excellent, because we need that data to be able to make these decisions. So that's...
That credit goes to our school administrators. So thank you for saying thank you to our school administrators who organized that for us.
They did a great job. That was, that's very important. And I have a very specific question. For the technology one, where you're talking about the different things you asked about that, was there anything in there about access at home? Like what percent have access at home? Not that you have to give me the answers right now.
See, I must have been psychic. 59% of the young people who took the survey said that they did have internet access at home.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mugler?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harper?
Dr. Coop, Cooper.
Coop works.
I knew I'd call you Coop anyway.
Okay.
The comments about maintenance and cleanliness, the custodial staff that were asked to the students, I'm a little miffed at their responses, because I have the opinion that our maintenance department, as well as our custodial staff, do a real good job. Maybe I'm off-skill on this, possibly, but am I interpreting you right that the students had, didn't have the best comments about our maintenance, or our cleanliness, or custodial staff?
Well, they weren't making comments about staff members. And so, if you look building by building, you'll see some very different results based on differences in staff members. When you aggregate the results overall, we continue to have problems, and we heard them last year, which is why we had new restrooms. Students who did not agree with, "My school is clean and well-maintained," that was the statement that they were asked to respond to. So if they disagreed with that, or strongly disagreed with that, they had a list of follow-up questions, and they specifically cited the cleanliness of restrooms and the cleanliness of classrooms and common areas. Adults also, who disagreed with that, shared the same concerns. It was a primary focus on the cleanliness of restrooms and classrooms. So I don't, there's no comment about specific staff members. We could take a look at all the verbal comments and see if we can get you more detailed information.
I'm not concerned about individual names, as I am about the fact that kids who reply on surveys about the cleanliness of a bathroom are the ones that keep it in disarray. And the maintenance aspect, they need to see a Tom Sawyer presentation to see what, exactly what type of maintenance goes on that saves money and keeps the curb appeal in effect, and all those other good things. So, I don't want anybody watching this to think that we got dirty schools, and we don't maintain them, with the curb appeal and improvements to the bathrooms. The bathrooms now look, with the tile effect, they look swell, but I don't know if kids even appreciate it, to tell you the truth. But thank you for your answer.
Well, and you always have to remember, sir, that they're comparing the restroom that they use, that's a much larger facility, that's used by hundreds of students during the day, with the restroom that they... the day, with the restroom that they use at home, that they use individually and maybe sharing with two or three other people. And so that can account for some differences in what the expectations are.
Mr. Ruth?
If I might just drive that point home, that so many students are using the restrooms, it's not our janitor's fault, it's that the students are falling prey to a tragedy of the commons. They're all using the restroom, but no one cares what condition they leave the restroom in. They don't bother to flush the toilet or the paper towels in the trash cans. Again, the problem isn't our janitorial staff, it's that our students aren't respecting the school's property, particularly in the restrooms. That's all.
It comes from a student.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes, Dr. Cooper. Dr. Shiflett knows I ask this question almost every year, and that is, how is this information shared with building principals? Because it's an excellent report, but for me, one of the most important things you have down here is your next step, to share this information with building principals, good or bad. The data has to be shared with them so that they'll know the status of their particular school, and as you alluded to, come up with a plan to address some issues. So I really like that idea. I'm quite sure our executive directors sit down with our principals and like to see that continue, that needs to be done. And especially in light of the fact that you have now an increased response from students and staff, that is really significant.
Other comments or questions for Dr. Cooper? Mrs. Henry?
I was just going to say, it's always interesting, and my statistics classes were never very interesting. It didn't seem like I was going to come out with anything that was very useful or fun, and you always manage to make sense of this for those of us who were traumatized by statistics classes. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Thank you very much, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper.
Dr. Shiflett?
Our next report is, you know, we've been talking about the budget for, it seems like forever right now, and every time we talk about it, we talk about the fact that it's a very dynamic process during this time of year. Well, tonight's the night that we present to you what we know at this point, and we will be doing Funds 50, as well as our other fund budgets that we presented to you previously, and our compensation plan. And Ms. Susie Scott, I think she's ready, will be doing the presentation for us.
Trying to get lessons on how to forward and go forward on my presentation here. Good evening, Chairman Bubler and Mr. Kilgore, Dr. Shiflett, members of the board. I'm pleased to present tonight the budgets for Fund 50, our operating fund, 51, our student nutrition, Fund 60, our reimbursable projects, and Fund 94, our student activity fund. In addition, we have the proposed salary scales for the fiscal '13. Sorry, can't hear me. And I thought I had such a big mouth. And also the salary scales, the proposed salary scales for the fiscal '13, '14 school year. So we're going to get started by kind of recapping where we were on March 6th. When we presented the budget on March 6th, and as you'll recall from the joint meetings with city council and the forums that Dr. Shiflett and Mrs. Bunting have been doing, everything has been presented as sort of a protect, invest, or disinvest standpoint. The budget that was presented to you on March 6th was basically a disinvest budget. Those are the things that we would have had to reduce if we were faced with the funding proposed by the city based on the current revenue estimates and the current tax rate.
Ms. Scott, could you say that again, please? What you just said?
Okay, the budget that was presented on March 6th would have been based on the funding generated by the local contribution from the city based on their revenue projections at the current tax rate, and would have, and reflected the cuts that would have been made.
Would have been.
That would have been made at that level.
Thank you, ma'am.
At that point, we presented a budget gap of $9.2 million. Since that time, the city has come forward, and they have looked at their revenue, which they generally do. They revise their revenue at least once or twice each year as they are able to refine their estimates. They ran their revised revenue projections through the local funding formula, and that gave us an additional $415,000 over what we expected to have. So at that point, it reduced the estimated budget gap from the $9.2 million to just under $8.8 million. So we go forward from that point, and we are proposing some additional adjustments. As you know, the budget that was presented on March 6th had the phase-in of the VRS employee share. Starting this year, VRS mandated that the employees begin to pay the 5% employee share. We were allowed to phase it in either all at once or in whole percentages over a maximum of five years. So in other words, a minimum of at least 1% a year, so that it was completely phased in within five years. In the current fiscal year, FY '13, we phased in the first 1%. The original budget that was proposed on March 6th proposed phasing in the next 1% and then a 2% raise on top of that, which would have been a total of 3%. At this point, we are proposing that we move forward with the remaining 3% that would bring us to the whole 5% shift. The city did their entire 5% shift this past year, as did a number of localities. There were more localities than school divisions that did the whole 5%, but a number of school divisions also did it. We are also facing a new VRS plan, retirement plan, coming in in January, which adds another layer of complexity. So it helps to make that transition. So we're proposing to do the other 3% at this point, which is a total cost of $1,001, just slightly over $1,001. We also have a few miscellaneous adjustments. Every budget has lots and lots of little ins and outs where departments make adjustments for license fees, for software. We adjusted our unemployment. We had a revision to the New Horizons budget. All of those little ins and outs make an adjustment of $67,740. So we're proposing total adjustments of $1,077,182. Moving forward from the 6th, we are also proposing that we retain some of the reductions that were presented at that point. We are proposing that the reductions that we retain in the budget are a 50% reduction to field trips for $25,681, the elimination of the elementary instructional leader supplements for $146,781, a change to our sick leave payout policy. Currently, we pay out employees who voluntarily resign from the division for their sick leave at a rate of $30 a day. We have revised our sick leave policy, I believe you passed it in the last week or two, to reflect that we will no longer pay out sick leave for employees who voluntarily leave the school division, other than for retirement. Employees who are retiring from the division are still eligible to be paid out or to do the sick leave credit. But for those who leave voluntarily, taking employment elsewhere or leaving the workforce, we will not pay out their sick leave. We will retain it on our books for five years. They're eligible to transfer to another school division in Virginia, and we will honor that. They can also transfer it back if they're coming back to us from another school division. After the five years, the sick leave is no longer retained if they haven't come back at that point. In addition, we are maintaining the cuts that were made as a result of declining enrollment for about $1,007. So that makes total reductions that we are proposing to keep in the budget of just under $2 million. So to recap what that looks like, our revised budget gap with the additional $415,000 of local contribution is now $8,786,108. We propose total adjustments, primarily the 3% VRS of $1,077, maintaining reductions of $1,963,290, to bring us to a revised gap of $8 million above the local funding formula. This protects the services and the things that we have in our budget, for the most part, except for those items that were mentioned on the previous slide. So at this point, if you were in the protect mode, which is what this reflects, we've moved from disinvest to protect, this is what our revenues would look like at the protect level, which is the $8 million. Our total budget would be $198,966, excuse me, can't even read it myself, $196,998,077, with matching appropriations, expenditure appropriations of $196,998,077. However, as we reflected on this, we decided that we really wanted to move forward with an invest mode. So we decided that we needed to look at what would we spend the investment dollars on? And the investment dollars amount to $4 million. So we're looking at an investment of an additional $4 million over the $8 million that would reflect the protect level. What we would do with this is that in technology, we have a replacement plan that's based on a five-year replacement cycle. We would like to have an additional $2,264,000 for computers, charging carts, and interactive whiteboards. This would not bring us current with our replacement plan, but it would go a long way to helping us to move forward with it. In transportation, we'd like to request $1,075 for school buses. We'd refurbish five school buses at a cost of $45,000 each, and we would purchase 10 new buses at a cost of $85,000 each. In maintenance, as you know, we have significant deferred maintenance due to a lack of funding. So we would like to devote $661,000 of the $4 million to maintenance projects, locker room upgrades, concrete repair that's throughout the division, parking areas, many of the ceiling tiles in our schools, and then roof repair and design work. So if we look at the invest, what does the invest look like? Now we're up to a request of $200,998,077. At this level, the only change on the revenue side is to the local contribution line. It goes from $70,773 to $74,773. On the expenditure side, the items that we have requested affect categories 3, 4, and 9. So there are changes in the amounts reflected on the previous slide to categories 3, 4, and 9. And if you do the math, there's also about a $27,000 change to category 1, where we moved some money for our new copier contract from category 1 to category 9, because we consolidated the copiers at the secondary schools and the ones that finance, the ones that technology and the ones that finance were maintaining separate POs on. We consolidated those, and so we had to move some money to category 9 to support that, that we'd been paying out of category 1. So our total budget request, at this point, we recommend adopting the FY '14 budget at the invest level of $200,998,077. This reflects a request from city council for $12 million above the funding formula. And just to make sure it's perfectly clear, this reflects putting back in all of the items that were in the proposed cuts of March 6th, with the exception of those handful of items that were reflected right here. So it proposes putting everything that was back in, the 8AB at the high school, the middle school teaming, the art and music teachers, the guidance, the nurses, all of the things that were the proposed cuts are back in the budget, with the exception of these items. All right, so again, the proposed budget that we're recommending for adoption is a total of almost $201 million, and is a $12 million request to city council above and beyond what they would have given us through the local funding formula. Moving on to the other funds, Funds 51, 60, and 94. Fund 51, and all of these funds were presented on March 13th, but there are some minor changes to a couple of them. On Fund 51, because they follow the same salary guidelines as Fund 50, this reflects the change from a total 3% raise to a total 6% raise. That's the only change that's been made here, is to adjust the salary and benefit lines to reflect that increase. On Fund 60, the reimbursable project funds, we made a correction to the Gear Up grant to add a sixth year. Yes. So that now has the correct amount in it. And then we made a couple of small changes to the bottom, to the NEA urban grant and the youth violence prevention grant to make a correction to the numbers that we had there. We had had a little math error in there, so we made a correction to that. On Fund 94, there are no changes. It's the same as what was presented on March 13th. Moving on to the compensation plan, we made adjustments to the teacher scale to reflect the 6% increase. Teachers at the entry level, the beginning salary, will go up from $38,300 to $40,000. The 6% is reflected diagonally. So if you look at the teacher who was making $38,300 this year on step 0 and moves to step 1 next year, the $40,598 reflects a 6% increase over the $38,300. So as you continue to move diagonally down the scale from step 1 this year to step 2 next year, step 2 this year to step 3 next year, that's where you see the 6% increase. Then this is the proposed scale for the 10-month teacher with a master's degree, starts with the, and it shows you the track, starts with the bachelor's, which is the same as that presented on the previous page, and then shows you their salary if they have a master's, a master's plus 30, or the EDS or the doctorate. And then this is if they have, same thing, except this reflects the master's in field. So it starts again with the bachelor's and shows you the track they follow if they have a master's in field. Moving on to the proposed general salary scale, this is the proposed scale for next year, again incorporating the 6% increase, two pages of that. The proposed hourly scale, again with the 6% increase. And all of the athletic, or all of the supplement schedules, which reflect the full supplement, the 25% reductions have been restored, and the supplements are level with this year. So athletic, co-curricular, education, and general. So what are our next steps at this point? Well, hopefully, tonight, we'll have approval of Funds 50, 51, 60, and 94. We will transmit a letter with the approved budget to the city manager no later than Friday, the 29th. It's due April 1st, but since that is not a workday for any of us, we're going to get it there early. The city council has public hearings on April 24th and May 1st, and approval of their budget on May 8th, and we all hope that the hearings and the approval of the budget are well-attended. And at that point, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to entertain those.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Questions from board members? For Ms. Scott?
I think we have seen this every day for the last, I don't know how many days, and you have so eloquently described everything in this budget for us that we are
It certainly took a lot longer to do than to talk about.
We are left without questions. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Shiflett?
I do want to say a special thanks to Dr. Hellman, and Susie, and Lisa, and Visel, for all the support they've provided to us as we've worked through the budget this year. I also want to thank all the numerous people who have provided input to us, and we've listened to you. We are, you know, going forward with requesting the additional funds from city council. We need you to continue your support.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. We move now to our action agenda, or our place on the agenda where we take action on some items. And first up on our action agenda tonight, coincidentally, happens to be the approval of the superintendent's proposal for FY 2013, 2014 school operating budget and Budgets 51, 60, and 94. Before we proceed with that vote, I would also like to acknowledge Dr. Hellman and his finance team, Susannah Scott, Lisa Dean-Hafer, and Visel Thompson, and all those who support them. and all those who support them, and doing the difficult work that you all have had in preparing this year's budget. And also to commend our superintendent, Dr. Shiflett, for her work and dedication to the development of our budget, and to her dedication to communicating our budget story to the community. Alongside with our city manager, they very ably conducted four community budget forums. Reductions in state and federal funding and a decline in local revenues have created immense challenges. The economic state of our nation, state, and community has unparalleled. As Ms. Scott indicates in her presentation tonight, we are looking at a shortfall of $8 million. Since 2008, the Division has responsibly sought efficiencies, reduced salaries, increased health insurance rates, reduced available benefits, sadly closed schools, reduced our workforce by 12%. Our workforce has not seen a true increase in salary since 2008. Public outcry has indeed not been low. To the contrary, board members have received input from parents, from staff, from citizens, and from students through telephone calls, emails, written letters, and personal conversations inside and outside of our grocery stores. In addition, board members have received input through our School Division website. There's a budget question-and-answer site there, and we receive feedback from that site as well. And school board members attended the four budget forums conducted by the city manager and the superintendent of schools to hear the public input at those meetings as well. And we have also received the feedback from the surveys that were conducted at those meetings. As school board members, we focus on priorities and goals for the School Division, and it is our responsibility to direct resources in ways that we will, in ways that we believe will lead to achieving those goals. And we have arrived at our tipping point. This year's potential budget reductions would directly affect our classrooms, the quality of our instruction, and options available to our students. A budget that increases class size, eliminates robust music and art offerings, dismantles our secondary programs with the elimination of an eight-block schedule in middle school team teaching, eliminating full-time kindergarten instructional leaders, closing our early childhood center for pre-kindergarten four-year-olds, compromising our highly qualified nursing staff, eliminating cafeteria monitors. The reduction of salary for any employee is unacceptable, including those who are 12-month employees. We cannot balance our budget on the backs of our teachers, our staff, or our children. Such cuts would be detrimental to the core of our business of teaching and learning. I am pleased that we will be voting tonight on a budget that presents our needs to city leaders and the needs of this School Division along with our request for an investment in our School Division. We must protect the integrity of this School Division. We must protect the children that attend our schools and the men and women who teach them, as well as those who work to support the tapestry which is Hampton City Schools. And this involves our requesting City Council to adjust the real estate tax rate in order to accommodate our estimate of School Division needs. This is not a perfect budget. It does indeed eliminate supplements for elementary instructional leaders. It reduces field trip funding, which we do not wish to do. It makes adjustment to School Division policy on sick leave payout. The superintendent's proposal is indeed a best-case scenario budget and will require the support of our City Council. And I will warn that if an adjustment is not made to our real estate tax rate for 12 cents, which would enable us to invest, or for 8 cents that we need to support the basic needs of our budget, we will be forced to go back in and make amendments to this budget. And we do not want to do that. While our vote tonight completes our process related to the 2014 budget development, it is just the start of our city's budget process. The first city budget hearing will be held on April 24th, when the city manager will present her budget proposal to City Council. Additional hearings will be held on May 1st and May 8th. Again, I encourage citizens to attend one of those budget hearings and to communicate your support of our proposed budget. While I am optimistic that our city leaders will give every consideration to an adjustment in the real estate tax rate, it is not a given, and they must hear support from our citizens in order to make such a decision. Thank you. Comments from other board members? Mrs. Henry?
Madam Chairman, thank you. I want to commend you and the superintendent for speaking for a budget which will continue to invest in our school system. In the past month, the city manager and the superintendent have done a good job of explaining how many things that we value in the city and in our schools will be put at risk without an adjustment in city revenue. In the past five years, we've watched city and state revenues decrease, and the school system has cut close to 14% of our workforce and over $24 million from the budget. The prospect of another $8 million in cuts would put us in an untenable position. I've been connected with Hampton City Schools for 40 years as a teacher, a principal, a taxpayer, and most importantly, a parent. I've seen the Division go through the kinds of funds we will face with no new revenue. In the 1980s, Hampton City Schools cut art, music, and physical education teachers from elementary schools. It took us nearly 20 years to get those programs fully restored. We also lost quality, experienced teachers in electives and in special education. Current budget challenges could cost us those programs again, and increased class sizes in 4th and 5th grades, where so many essential skills are established, would be, again, just untenable. I hope that the citizens understand that we're not asking for more money recklessly, that this is a needs-based budget. Please ask for clarification if you feel that there's anything that looks overly generous in the budget. For example, please remember that what looks like a 6% raise for teachers and staff is in fact mostly to reimburse teachers for a major benefit cut with regard to their VRS retirement payments. That the raise is in reality only the 2% mandated by the governor's budget, the first salary increase for our employees in four years, and that increase, it will be eaten up largely by health insurance costs. I hope that everyone realizes that the decision to request a larger appropriation from city government is a gamble on our part. We're gambling that the citizens will understand that we need a substantial increase in city funding to protect the programs we have now. Additionally, we need to have funds to invest. It's false economy, for example, to continue to cut line items for replacement of buses and technology. Again, I've lived through that kind of approach in the past, when the lack of support from City Council caused maintenance funds to be cut and our schools to become dilapidated. Our current City Council has understood that, and in the past eight years has committed to providing quality school repairs and renovations. We can't go backwards. The current funding formula we have with the city cannot provide us with the funds that we so desperately need. We're asking the citizens to support our budget requests with City Council and to support the tax rate adjustment that will be needed to fund the school board budget. I'm a little old lady on a fixed income. I don't like paying taxes any better than anyone else. But the only expense in my life that has not increased in the past five years is the amount I pay for the city services I value in this town and for the school system that my grandchildren will be entering soon. I support a tax rate adjustment. I urge all of you to do so as well. Thank you.
Ms. Mugler? I second our chairman, Ms. Mugler's comments, well-stated. Just briefly, I'd like to add that in the past few years, the community has often said to us, "Why don't we ask for more money?" Now, we all know that there's a funding formula established by City Council. We cannot change the funding formula. The funding formula dictates what percentage of real estate taxes will be coming to our school system. So this year, this year, we're asking for $12 million. Now, even if we get the $12 million, you've heard that the money that goes towards technology would not even bring us current. We lose $24 million over the past several years. Of course, $12 million cannot restore the cuts that we've already made. The $12 million will only keep us at a point where we do not have to cut further. So we hope that with the city's needs and the school system's needs, this community, as Delonte Green said so well, will come to realization that we cannot continue on the path that we're going, and that we must do something. And as Ms. Henry said, most of us do not like any increases in taxes, but we value our city and we value our school system, and then we're just going to have to bite the bullet. Ms. Mugler?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harper?
I tell you what always bothers me with budgets and cuts. It extends the gap between the haves and the have-nots. The have-nots, city services, use the library in the summertime to get relief from the heat. They use the computers, which they don't have at home. I know a little girl in elementary school who thinks that her cafeteria monitor is her real grandmother. She doesn't know about what we're talking about now. She just expressed some sentiment to me a few months ago, and I took into consideration what sometimes small people mean as far as a big effort. Like I said, the only, the thing that bothers me is when you have these budget cuts, you increase that gap. And those that don't have a lot have even less. So I don't know. When I ride on the highways and I see the transportation, I see roads are nice and fixed up, I don't mind paying road taxes and highway transportation taxes, whatever you want to categorize them at. And for the same, by the same token, there are people who will tell you that they don't have a dog in this fight. Well, everybody has a dog in the fight that affects kids in school and positive schools and people moving to Hampton. Everybody has a dog in that fight. Those are the people that may say, "Well, I don't want to increase my real estate taxes because I don't have a kid in the school." Well, you have a lot more estate when you do keep your schools beautiful. You bring businesses and citizens to Hampton. You do a lot of positive things. And I'm just so against, you know, where you have to go when you start cutting budgets. The people that are really affected, the have-nots. So I guess that's just the way I feel about a budget. The City Council keeps expecting us to make Hampton a livable city, and to do that right there, we need full funding. It's no pipe dream. It's no fantasy. It's just the way it is. So if you live in a house and you don't have kids in school, you don't have a dog in the fight, and we don't want to, we don't want to say to you that you're not as important a citizen in Hampton as anybody else. Everybody's got to pull together, rally around the flagpole, and support our kids. Simple as that. Thank you, Ms. Mugler.
Thank you, Mr. Harper. Other comments from board members? Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I just want to echo all the sentiments of my fellow board members, so there's not much else I have to add, except just to say this is really the time for our community to unite, and we need everyone to come out to these City Council hearings on April 24th and May 1st. Please tell your neighbors, tell students to come out, staff. Everybody needs to come out there and make sure that City Council knows that we don't want to see these cuts in our schools anymore, and that we need to stand behind them. So just, I urge you to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mr. Kilgore?
Just one thing. I think Dr. Shiflett said it well when she said this is a very dynamic budget. This has been my third year involved with school budgets, and they are extremely dynamic. And they are extremely complicated. The numerous funding sources, the numerous mandates. It is not easy to understand, and it is ever-changing. But I want to thank Susie Scott and her staff for all the hard work in the DLT, for all their hard efforts over the months, literally, that it takes to put this together. And I also want to say that, you know, there were, there were well over, probably, close to 1,000 people that came to the public forums. I know there was about 800 that actually polled, but there were lots and lots of people in the audience that didn't poll. They just came to listen and learn. And so City Manager Bunting and Dr. Shiflett both did an excellent job at the public forums. There were well over 1,000 people that polled, and that's great. I think you are giving City Council and the School Division your input when you do that. But like Mrs. Smith said, it can't stop there. Even though you have spoken and you have given your opinion on this matter, City Council truly needs to see you. You don't necessarily have to speak. If you want to get 50 friends together and have one person speak for you, that's okay too. But you can't just poll online or come to these public forums. When it's an issue as weighty as this is, as far as raising taxes, they really want to hear from you. So April 24th and May 1st are critical dates to remember.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Anything further from board members? Okay, if not, let's vote on this. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the superintendent's proposed fiscal year 2013, 2014 School Operating Budget and Budgets 51, 60, and 94.
Second. It has been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Phillips and Mr. Harper that we approve the superintendent's proposal for the FY 2013, 2014 School Operating Budget and Budgets 51, 60, and 94. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Let me read this statement first. As a member of the School Board of the City of Hampton, Virginia, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the superintendent's proposed FY 13, 14 School Operating Budget because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the vote on this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
I also have a statement to read. As a member of the School Board of the City of Hampton, Virginia, I acknowledge that I have an interest in the superintendent's proposed FY 2013, 2014 School Operating Budget because my wife is an employee of Hampton City Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the vote on this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. My vote is aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. We move now to the next item on our agenda for action tonight is Item 6.02, the Revision of Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. And before we take that matter up, I will make just a brief comment about that. I promise it's somewhat brief. And this will probably be the last sort of comment I'll try and make tonight. But the board votes tonight on the approval of revisions to our Division's Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook and looks to adopt new school board policy JP, all electronic devices. In March of 2009, the School Board made revisions to its policy regarding cellphone use in our schools. And at that time, the policy allowed high school students to possess cellphones in school and prohibit middle school and elementary school students from such a privilege. And that was adopted at that time in our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. In the spring of 2010, a cellphone work team was appointed. They were made up of teachers, school administrators, parents, and students. They were appointed to study the policy. And ultimately, the work team did not recommend a change to the policy as it did not reach consensus of a 75% threshold that they had established for themselves. And even though twice as many of those members on that committee favored making a change versus those who did not favor making a change, they stuck to their threshold. So since that time, Hampton City Schools launched a pilot program called BYOD, or Bring Your Own Device, to school, which allows students to bring their own digital device, which could be a handheld tablet or a laptop for academic use. And in light of the potential expansion of this program division-wide this year, the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook Revisions Committee and the Policy Review Committee were requested, once again, to look at the policy to determine whether or not any change in this policy was appropriate. So at this time, we move forward with the revision of our student rights and responsibilities. So, at this time, we move forward with the revision of our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Is there a motion?
I move approval of item 602, Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
Second.
It has been moved by Mrs. Smith and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve the revisions to the Rights, Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Harper?
I've long been a opponent of kids having a cellphone in school, Joey, and you know that. But I've been convinced that the social, social network is here, and I too have a granddaughter in middle school who carries a cellphone everywhere. I have a lot of consternation about it because I can see trouble, but that's, that's the mark of technology. There's always some consternation about improvements and differences and changes. And I'm gonna vote on this, but I'm still, I'm gonna be a little apprehensive about the usage and the trust that we put in our middle school kids. And a few years ago, somebody was saying, saying anything about elementary kids, "They're too young to have them." So, we'll see what's next on the horizon. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion from board members? If not, is there a motion? There's already been a motion. Pardon me, pardon me. It's been, it's been a long day.
Long year.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the revisions to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, and discussion has been held. Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. And also, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Mr. Tim Grimes for all the hard work he does on this Rights and Responsibilities Handbook every year. We appreciate your hard work and the work of your committee as well. We move on to item 6.03, Revision of School Board Policy DA, Management of Funds.
Madam Chairman, would it be possible for us to consider items 6.03 through 6.10 at least one and vote on them as a block?
I would be happy to entertain such a motion.
I move that we consider 6.03 through 6.10 together.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Harper that we approve items 6.03 through 6.010, Revision of School Board Policy DA, Management of Funds, Revision of School Board Policy DG, Custody and Disbursement of School Funds, Revision of School Board Policy DGC, School Activity Funds, Revision of School Board Policy DI, Financial Accounting and Reporting, Revision of School Board Policy DIA, Reporting Per-Pupil Costs, Revision of School Board Policy DJB, Petty Cash Accounts, and Revision of School Board Policy DK, Payment Procedures. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move to our final item on action tonight, that's item 6.11, New School Board Policy JP, All Electronic Devices. Is there a motion?
I move for approval of item 6.11, New School Board Policy JP, All Electronic Devices.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Smith and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve New School Board Policy JP, All Electronic Devices. Is there any discussion? Mr. Booth?
Could someone clarify what constitutes a Bring Your Own Device instructional activity?
It has to be teacher-led, Mr. Booth.
Dr. Cooper? We would love to hear that explanation from you.
Okay. I have seen various own devices, smartphones, iPads, used in instructional capacity where the teacher has set up to have groups of students working, and they've been used for research, accessing the internet just simply to look things up, but also, teachers have set up where students can text in the answers and use them as electronic polling devices to check for understanding, much like the, the city used at the budget forums to, to take that. So, there really are a variety of uses. One of the best ones I've seen is embedding some written work with QR codes and having young students find the QR codes with a handheld that allowed, with a QR reader, which kicked up a video to spark interest, add additional information, and then send the student into looking at the next part of the book. So, it really sparked an interest in readers. So, those are just three examples that I could think of off the cuff.
Thank you much. I just wanted to make sure the policy was enhancing the electronic device experience and making it a more wholesome experience instead of just cutting technology out of student reach entirely. So, thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Yeah, I believe that'll help.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. That program has been piloted at Kickitane High School this year. Does that clarify for you?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments from board members? If not, Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move on now to our deliberation items on, on the agenda tonight. We start with item 7.01 and go through item 7.08. These items were presented to us in first read last week, and so, at this time, I will, we'll just go through them quickly, one by one, if, if board members have questions or comments regarding individual policies. We start with 7.01, Local Plan for Career and Technical Education, Perkins Funds, 2013-2014. Are there questions or comments from board members? Good evening, Mr. White. How are you?
Are there any of them left, Jesse?
Excuse me?
Are there any of those funds left?
Sure. I'm always positive about our fund, CTE funds.
Mr. White, would you explain what you've done to account for the possible sequester?
Well, right now, we're just guessing. So, there are several things that are, look like they may be coming down the pike. Our national directors, state directors of career and technical education and our association with career technical education, several others are constantly working with Congress. What we found out is that Congress is, on both sides of the aisle, are valuing these career and technical education funds because of the state of the economy and the role it plays in workforce development. Right now, it's just wait and see. I know that the Virginia Department of Education, they've had to run some numbers around 5.9%, but that's all we know for right now. What we're told to do is to use existing budget amount and then wait, and then, like last year, what happened was we saw a reduction, and then a couple of months later, we saw that money put back. So, I don't have a crystal ball on this one.
Thank you. We'll depend on you to keep us up to date on that as things develop.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from board members for Mr. White? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We move to item 7.02, Revision of School Board Policy GBA, Equal Opportunity Employer. Are there any questions or comments from board members on policy GBA? Next, we have item 7.03, Revision of School Board Policies GBAB, Discriminatory Harassment and GBAB-R, Discriminatory Harassment Complaint Procedure. Are there any comments or questions from board members on item 7.03? There being none, we'll move on to item 704, Revision of School Board Policy JB, Equal Educational Opportunities. Any comments or questions from school board members regarding policy JB? If not, we'll move to item 7.05, Revision of School Board Policy AC, Non-Discrimination. Questions or comments from board members on this policy? We move now to item 7.07, Revision of School Board Policy BB, School Board Legal Status. Any questions or comments from board members on policy BB? Excuse me, AA. If not, we'll move to item 7.07, Revision of School Board Policy BB, School Board Legal Status. Any questions or comments from board members on policy BB? The last item on our deliberation tonight is item 7.08, Revision of School Board Policy BBAA, Board Member Authority and Responsibilities. Are there any comments or questions from board members on this item tonight? There being none, we move on to our deliberation first read, which includes items 8.01 through 8.05. We start off with item 801, Revision of School Board Policy CF, School Building Administration. And do we have someone to speak to this policy tonight?
It's, it's one of your policies, one of in section A, B, and C, so I will go ahead and simply say that the language is updated as a result of the VSBA February 2013 update. They recommended new language for the School Board Building Administration, and I went ahead and recommended that you adopt those VSBA, the recommended language, and then there were changes in the legal citations, particularly adding the VDOE Guidelines for Uniform Performance Standards and Evaluation Criteria for Principals. Now that there's a new evaluations, the new language needed to be added here, and, and now that there's gonna be a new one for the superintendent, we'll do a similar one for your same section as that comes through. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Any questions for Ms. Reeves for clarification on, on this item? If not, we'll move on to item 8.02, Revision of School Board Policies IGDK and JEDD, Athletic Extracurricular Participation. Dr. Johnson, did you wanna speak to this for us, please?
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. The only recommended change to this policy is that we delete the cross-reference to policy IA, Instructional Goals, as these policies speak to participation in athletics and extracurricular activities.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Johnson on this item? We move next to item 8.03, Deletion of School Board Policy IFE, Curriculum Guides and Course Outlines.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. This policy made it to you before policy IF, which was recently revised. However, in looking at the policy on curriculum development and then having a separate policy on curriculum guides and course outlines, is my intent to bring forward to you IF with the language that is being deleted here in IFE so that there's one coherent policy on curriculum development.
Any questions for Dr. Johnson on this policy? We move to item 8.04, Deletion of School Board Policy EEACB, School Bus Maintenance. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, school board members, this policy EEACB is just a reference to code citation section 22.1-134 and 22.1-177 of the Code of Virginia. When we looked at it, 134 applies to the county form of government and regulations of how school buses are to be maintained or it allows them to allow the county to maintain the school buses of the school division for the county form of government, which is, is not really applicable. And 177 allows the Board of Education at the state level to make regulations relating to construction design, operation equipment, and color of public school buses. So, the cross-reference there, both of them are, are really not germane to the maintenance of public school buses. Public school bus maintenance is regulated by Virginia Administrative Code 820-70-130, and more specifically states that the inspections and maintenance shall be conducted in accordance with provisions of the Preventive Maintenance Manual for Virginia's School Buses dated September 2012, which is what our maintenance department follows. So...
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hillman. Questions? Mrs. Henry?
We have a, a transportation policy that references the manuals that are applicable. In other words, Hampton City Schools' transportation system will follow the regulations of da-da-da-da-da, just like we have ones that say school bus drivers will...
This was the previous policy for maintenance, and, and it, it, it references two, two state codes that, quite frankly, are not...
I, I understand that, but we have a policy that references behavior of school board buses, bus drivers, and the manual that reinforces that. Should we not have a policy that says Hampton City Schools has this policy for maintaining well-appointed, in line with state code, da-da-da, buses? And the correct reference to the, the manual you...
We, we certainly could, but it's, it's been the recommendation in the past that, you know, we not necessarily replicate code in the school board policy. If it's, if it's the desire of the board, we could certainly formulate...
We have a policy about instruction, we have a policy about hiring, we have a policy about equal employment. All those are replicating something else. I think we ought to have one about school board maintenance that is a little specific and references whatever it should reference.
We'll be more than happy if that's the will of the board to...
Does VSBA have one? No, ma'am. No? They don't mention it at all? They do not? Interesting. Because there is a whole, there is all that state stuff about the bus must be so many year, you know, it has to be maintained, this and inspected, and...
And, and we...
It's all very detailed.
And we, we have all those manuals, and we follow the, the detailed guidelines that are, are referenced under the Virginia Administrative Code section.
Dr. Johnson, do you have something to add?
VSBA does have a policy, it's EEAC, School Bus Safety Program. It's about three sentences.
Okay. So, perhaps we could take a look at that for further consideration.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hillman. Last item on our first read tonight is the Revision of School Board Policy JBAA, Section 504, Non-Discrimination Policy and Grievance Procedures. Nancy Reeves, do you wish to present that to us?
Yes, ma'am. This is actually a new policy. We had combined it because Hampton City Schools has an exhaustive policy on grievance procedures regarding discrimination and harassment. However, it is perhaps best practice to have a separate policy and grievance procedure for students with 504 complaints of discrimination. So, the policy language is from VSBA recommended language, and this is a new policy that we're recommending be adopted.
Thank you very much. Mr. Booth?
Chairman Mugler and Ms. Reeves, I noticed on section A, number 1, paragraph 2, however, oral complaints shall also be accepted. Is there any specific reason behind that? Isn't it better to have a paper trail for...
Because the federal law says that you can do it either way.
Okay.
Paper trail.
Other questions from board members for clarification on this policy?
It's a good question, Mr. Booth. I can't tell you what I had for dinner last Wednesday. I wrote it down though. Did it write? Void mistakes. Void mistakes.
Okay. Any further questions on Policy JBAA? If not, we move on to informational items, and I'll call first on Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. I do have just a couple of announcements. Both Thevis and Spratly Odyssey of the Mine Teams place first in their regional competition, and they'll go on to compete at the state level in Northern Virginia on April 13. So we want to extend our congratulations to them, and best of luck as you go on to state competition. Mrs. Mugler will be presenting our school board budget to City Council on April 24th. That will follow, will also be a time when they're having city budget hearings also on May 1st, and they will, the City Council will be adopting their budget on May 8. Next week is spring break, and I want to wish everyone a wonderful time off and get some rest and relaxation.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Information from Board members? Okay. If not, I'll just announce that there is no meeting on April 3rd because, as Dr. Shiflett has described, it is spring break. And so, I'd like to reiterate her happy wishes for our teachers and staff and our students to have a bright and cheerful spring break. And I'll announce that our next school board meeting will be held on April 17th at the Rupert Sargent Building. Is there anything further to come before the Board?
Madam Chair, I have a motion for you?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that the School Board reconvene in a closed session for student dis discipline pursuant to Section 2.23711A of the Code of Virginia, specifically Section 2.23711A Sub 2. Following the closed session to consider the recommendation for discipling students enrolled in the School Division, the Board will again convene in open session to vote on the matters under consideration.
Second.
It has been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we reconvene in closed session to take up student disciplinary matter, and that we will reconvene in public following that meeting. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. The motion carries. Dr. Shiflett, you had another announcement?
I did. This is really an important one.
Of course.
You know, we, we always look about this time of the year at our calendar to determine whether we've used our inclement weather days or not. And we dodged a bullet recently. But what I'd like to let you know is that we will be taking those two inclement weather days and using them at the end of the year, so taking the two days off. So we'll make the calendar adjustments. And Dr. Leary, will you be sending out an announcement to folks? Thank you so much.
Dr. Shiflett, are you sure we're out of the woods in the Weather Department? We are in Hampton, Virginia.
No, I know. Well, I think we're out of the woods for snow.
Never say never.
I know.
Is there anything further to come before the Board? If not, this meeting is adjourned, and we will reconvene in closed session in 10 minutes.